Sorry about that, Mr. President.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2019 to order. It is now 6:37 PM. I'd like to please stand for the invocation by Pastor Roger Wills of Trinity Free Methodist Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we acknowledge your presence wherever we are. We invite your guidance to the town council meeting tonight. We pray that you'll bless our town, help us to disagree agreeably, help us, Lord, to be of one heart, even if we might not be of one mind. We pray, Lord Jesus, for this town, that you'll guide the procedures here tonight, that decisions that are made will be to honor and glorify you and to build this town. We pray, Lord Jesus, for our state and our country in this world. Use each one of us as you will, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Guerinc.
Jesus.
What are you doing?
Span.
President.
Minchuck.
Here.
Yuzlak.
President.
Baron.
Here.
Pettit.
Here.
Hardaway. And Lamarc, what did I do, Lamarc? Then Hardaway.
Here.
We have six presidents. We have a quorum. Uh, petition communications, acknowledgements, remonstrations. Uh, number one, we have a public hearing on community center lease and adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of the lease and adopt resolution approving sale of leased property to the building corporation.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Minchuck, that we approve. Oh, it's, sorry about that. It's a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on the community lease agreement?
Oh, sure.
Any public comment on the community lease agreement? Any public comment? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Span.
No.
Minchuck.
Yes.
Yuzlak.
No.
Baron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes. Motion passes for the two. Uh, and we also have a letter from Maryville School Superintendent Nicholas Brown requesting the town to waive permit fees for the Pierce renovation project.
Motion.
Who has the letter?
Oh, this should have been in a package. I can read it.
Please.
Mr. Richard Hardaway, President, Maryville Town Council. Dear Mr. Hardaway, the Maryville Community School Corporation is proud to announce a 1.6 million construction project to renovate the front entrance of Clifford Pierce Middle School scheduled to begin November 18th, 2019. The construction project will increase security for students, staff, and guests, as well as bring administration to the front of the building for parent and visitor accessibility. The Maryville Community School Corporation recently submitted a permit for this renovation project. We respectfully request the Maryville Town Council to waive the fees totaling $12,250. If you have any questions about the project, I'd be happy to discuss it with you. As always, the continued support and partnership of the Maryville Town Council is very much appreciated. Sincerely, Nicholas G. Brown, Superintendent of Schools.
Sheila, what did you say the fees were?
$12,250.
Did we waive them before?
You, you made a motion.
I made a motion. My motion stands. I'm sorry. I just wanted to know.
Yes, I'll second for discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second for discussion, and I would ask Councilwoman Baron, uh, to amend her motion, and I'll second that they will pay the inspectors.
Oh, sure. They were told.
They will pay the inspector fees.
I amend my motion to, um, that they will pay the inspector fees.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we, uh, waived the fees for the construction of Pierce Middle School in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Uh, one other thing on the petitions communications yesterday was Veterans Day. We had a nice Veterans Day program. Uh, we had a 95-year-old World War II veteran that spoke. Yeah, his name is Edward Boer. He lives down on Orchard Drive. He did an excellent job yesterday. Uh, the Maryville Coral Teams were here. They took, yesterday was the e-learning day for that, for the school, and all of those kids, we probably had about 20, 25 of them that came out yesterday at Saint. So, it was a great time had by all. Consider agenda, council payable register voucher approval for November 12th, along with the approval of town council meeting minutes for October 22nd.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve the consent agenda in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Uh, standing committees, budget and finance, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Uh, Public Works, Councilman Minchuck.
Uh, nothing in particular this time. I just wanted to, uh, say I'm gonna reach out to, um, our Public Works supervisors to find out. We got some crazy weather going on now. Uh, we got snow on the ground. We still got leaves in the trees.
Right.
So, we're gonna sit down, give them a call, see what we can do. We'll have to make some amendments or some changes to our current programs, and we'll go from there. But as soon as we get something solidified, I'll definitely reach out, notify everybody.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Council affairs, anybody have anything on the council affairs? Councilwoman Lamarc, personnel policy, personnel policy and employee benefits, Councilman Pettit?
Yes, Mr. President. Tonight, um, Matt Galeros is in the audience, and after doing a thorough competitive market review, we believe that United Healthcare is still the best option for the town of Maryville's medical insurance for 2020. Um, Meyer and Galeros is recommending the following adjustments, and we'd had a personnel committee meeting. We went through this with Matt and Pat. Uh, number one, renewed the two current plans with no benefit change, but changed the network to United Healthcare's high-performance Core Network. Core is the second-largest network locally and still provides a national network for the employees. The only local facility that will not be in the network will be University of Chicago. All other local facilities will remain in the network. We performed a claims review and found that less than 1% of all claims were filed at the University of Chicago. The use of the Core Network as the primary option for the employees will help us hold employee contributions for those two plans with no changes. Our review has found that if all employees enroll in this plan, the town will see an average saving, or savings of $15,000 from current cost. Uh, please note, we were budgeting a 10% increase. In order to maintain benefits for the employees, we recommend adding a third health plan option that uses the current Core Plus Network that includes University of Chicago. If employees elect this plan, they will have to pay a higher contribution amount for this plan. We recommend renewing the dental vision, life, and disability coverage with Guardian as they are a rate hole. Matt, do you have anything else to add? That is my motion, Mr. President. I'll second that motion.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Minchuck, that we approve the, uh, insurance for 2020. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Anything else on employee?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Public safety, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yeah, just one thing. With the snowfall coming and December on its way, we have a lot of cars that are still parked on the street, and I'm sure the policemen will be giving out tickets if they don't move or warning. So, I've been telling everybody in my area, please keep your car off the street, because when the snowplows come, it's hard to get around them.
Right, yeah. What, what happens, Marge, is, uh, not only will the police officers take it, but then code enforcement goes out too.
Yes.
Especially when snow reaches two inches or more.
Right.
They will take it, and we will tow.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Uh, parks and recreation, Jan, you have anything?
Yes, I do have a couple of things. I reported at the last meeting that the Park Department received a tree grant from, uh, the Little Calumet River Basin Project. Uh, the amount of the grant is for $10,473, and, uh, that's going to give us, uh, 30 varieties of different trees that we will have planted in four parks, and just with everything else, we don't know where we stand right now as there's snow on the ground. So, I will get with Dan Repay and ask him, um, if that can possibly be extended, if we don't have the weather, if that could be extended planting in the spring.
Right.
Second thing is, I just want to remind everybody, the Santa procession is going to take place on Friday, December 6th. Uh, it will start at, um, MIS and travel, uh, east on 61st Avenue to Harrison, and Harrison over to Tyler to Prusen Park. Uh, at Prusen Park, Santa will be there, and the Lions Club is going to be sponsoring our refreshments this year, and they will also have a float in the procession. The play equipment that we received through a grant, uh, will be delivered, uh, in the next few weeks. We'll store that at the North Barn and then have Public Works install that in the spring, and that's for Crescent Lake Park.
And how much was that grant for Crescent Lake?
It was a 65-35 grant. It was originally 18,000 some odd dollars, and through the grant, it was reduced to 12,000.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, the Park Department worked, uh, together with NICA, Northwest Indiana Community Action Agency, and we held two workshops for Medicare Part D. We had an awful lot of people come in and, uh, participate and actually sign up for Medicare Part D. So, it was a great working relationship with NICA, and it was great to service, uh, some of the seniors that required, uh, that type of health benefit. Last on my list is the Census 2020. I probably will be talking about this through 2020. I attended a meeting at Cedar Lake for their, uh, Complete Count Committee, and in doing so, I reached out to a couple of different, uh, folks, and State Representative Lisa Beck is going to be, uh, sitting on our Complete Count Committee. She feels that it is very important that we get a complete count for Maryville, as we do not want to lose any type of, uh, representatives, um, due to the lack of, uh, us getting a complete count. Um, that is the end of my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Good job.
Thank you. Uh, environmental affairs, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Elections, public relations, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
No report.
Mr. President, uh, through Marge's committee, um, those that want to attend the gala, we have, uh, seats available. Uh, the Police Department bought a table. Uh, the town has bought a table. Uh, there were a couple of other sponsors that do work in town that bought tables, and there are seats available. Please, I need to know by Thursday, and I know, Chrissy, you've already said you're going. I need to know by Thursday through Linda, who is going. We start with the council. If the council does not want to go, that's your prerogative, and then we offer it to the department heads and town employees to, to attend as well. So, see Linda.
I'm gonna charge the ticket, Sean.
There, you don't, they're free. They're, they're $85, Margie, but we paid, yeah. Yeah, so if you want to go, there's tables available. Let Linda know.
Oh, that's through the chamber, correct?
Yes, mhm. Yep, we'll give out the Police Officer of the Year, the Firefighter of the Year, and the Teacher of the Year from Maryville.
And what date is that?
That's 23rd of November, Saturday night, at Avalon.
Is that it? Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Utility liaison, Councilman Span.
No report.
Abandoned properties, no report. That concludes committee reports.
Mr. President Hardaway, I do have something on your committee, sir. If you, if you let me speak.
Do ya?
That's okay. I hold in my hand two quick claim deeds for two of the three parcels of the lot commonly known as the Kirichore area. Uh, there is three parcels. They're total, uh, through Joe's hard work, and whoever helped him, he was able to grab two of them, and the third one is in the works as we speak. As soon as we have our hands on, on all three, and as soon as we're able to, I think we need to start digging in there.
Good job.
Nice work.
Woo, yeah.
Yeah, I've, I had a conversation with Jim Brown, Economic Development Director for the county, and he's waiting here from us as to the GBDC money.
Yeah.
For the, uh, tearing down. So, it's gonna happen. Great job.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, general orders. First reading ordinance, we have a first reading ordinance and ordinance of the town of Maryville Lake County, Indiana, amending ordinance 19-14 and pay for the employees of the town of Maryville for the calendar of the year 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we approve ordinance 19-26 on first reading. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Span.
Hi.
Yes, okay. Uh, Minchuck?
Yes.
Yuzlak?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. Now, that concludes first reading ordinances, no second reading ordinances. Resolutions, Resolution 19-49, a resolution of town of Maryville Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2019 budget within the Parks General Fund for the purpose of a grant through the Little Calumet River Basin to plant 30 native trees in four co, community parks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Resolution 19-49. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Resolution 19-50, a resolution of town of Maryville Lake County, Indiana, concerning the holiday schedule for the calendar of the year 2020.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve Resolution 19-50. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Resolution 19-51, a resolution of town of Maryville Lake County, Indiana, allowing the town to accept a donation of real estate located at 8312 and 8450 Virginia Street, Maryville, Indiana, and all matters related thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we approve Resolution 19-21. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Resolution 19-52, resolution of the town council of the town of Maryville, Indiana, confirming the proposed lease of the community center in the town, authorizing and, and direction the execution of the lease and the publication of the notice of its execution and authorizing other actions in connection therewith.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman, Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve Resolution 19-52. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes resolutions. BZA action, uh, case number Z39E24-1019. The petitioner is Manguel Arango. The owner is Ernest Harper. The request is special exception approval to allow a dine-in and dine-drive-through restaurant 6740 Broadway. This zone is a C2 community commercial zoning district. Staff report, please.
Petitioner would like to receive special exception approval located at 67 Broadway, 6740 Broadway in a C2 community commercial zoning district for a restaurant with drive-up windows. Petitioner would like to open a Mexican restaurant to be known as Desa Yunos. This 2,200-square-foot building is currently Harper's Barbecue and Wings. This was originally a hamburger restaurant known as Daddy O's and then later the Gyros Restaurant. The restaurant will have approximately 38 seats. The restaurant will be open from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. There will be approximately five employees. Petitioner has been in contact with Maryville Conservancy District. Attorney has a copy of the commercial real estate purchase agreement. Parking is adequate for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only, and petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance.
Is petitioner present?
Yes. Miguel?
How long has this building been vacant? Sheila?
It's not vacant.
It's not vacant, okay.
Mr. Harper just opened, what, within the last year?
Yeah, he's been under a year.
Yeah, and so, and then he, he, he sold it to, uh...
He's here.
I think he's still operating now.
Well, yeah, he's still operating right now until, I guess, until he...
Shame, too.
Yeah.
Uh, crazy. I just got a couple of questions. Uh, what are the hours gonna be on your place?
6:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
6:00, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
9:00 PM?
Mhm.
Okay.
8:00 PM or 9:00 PM?
9:00 PM.
And then I know Sheila said it already, and it was in the, uh, what she read, but you are aware of the camera ordinance as well, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, this is gonna be Mexican food, yeah. Seafood?
Strictly Mexican.
Mhm.
Any liquor being served?
Uh, not at the moment.
No beer?
Not at the moment.
No Mexican beer?
We can get a license for it, yeah. I mean...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Minchuck, that we approve case number Z39E41019. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome.
Welcome to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, case number Z38E2-1019. Tong Dong is the petitioner. Jay Chang Lee is the owner. The request is special exception approval to allow a dine-in restaurant to 34 West 81st Avenue, uh, C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Is the petitioner present? Staff report, please.
Petitioner is requesting a special exception approval for a dine-in restaurant to be located at 234 West 81st Avenue in the C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Petitioner would like to open a Cajun seafood restaurant to be known as the Cajun House. The now vacant restaurant was known as Roxanna's Restaurant and has been closed for approximately a month. The restaurant has approximately 84 seats, and the parking is adequate for the restaurant use. The hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday, 11:00 AM to 9:30 PM. There will be six employees, one main chef, one deep fry, one prep person, and three to four servers. The attorney has a copy of the letter of intent. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve case number Z38E23-109. Any further discussion?
You're not in there now, are you?
I'm not.
Did Roxanne move out?
They moved out like a month ago, yes.
When?
A month ago.
Oh, a month ago? Okay. Are you signing, like, a lease you got with them or what?
Uh, yes, after this. Well, after this, it's me signing for like three, five, five years.
For five years? So then you'll be there for five years, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, very good.
Are you gonna allow samples to the council?
Well, you guys can come in. I mean, we have like, you know, like, a sub opening for like, you know, present offensive with that.
Let's go check it out, Marge.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who made the, who made the motion?
I did.
Sean, Philip made the motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, I got it.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you.
Case number Z36UV8-0919. MC Berg Property is the petitioner. The owner is BND Investments. The request is special exception approval, light industrial pole, 2929 West Lincoln Highway, C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Is the petitioner here? Staff report, please.
Petitioner is requesting a variance of use approval from Section 21-245 Retail Design Guidelines located at 2929 West Lincoln Highway in the C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. Petitioner would like to build a light industrial pole building with a partial stone front. The proposed uses for the building include mechanical, heating, and air conditioning companies, electric company, or manufacturing company. Petitioner has gone through preliminary subdivision approval with the Maryville Plan Commission for this property. Petitioner was deferred on September 25th, 2019, and requested by the Board of Zoning Appeals to provide a site plan for the building. Petitioner has submitted a site plan and the building renderings of the proposed building.
Want to go ahead and make a motion to approve?
Oh, okay, second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we approve case number Z36UV8-0919. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, to, uh, to Al or Sheila, we've got to do final subdivision approval on this, then, at the Plan Commission?
They'll be December.
December, okay. And you have spoken with Skip Bozak on, on the heritage situation, correct? And he's on board?
Yep.
Okay.
I have, uh, spoke to Skip. I've spoke to John, and I have spoke to Randy, and everybody is in favor of this project going forward. I've done my homework on it as a council representative for the ward.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome.
Thank you.
Case number Z30E188-0919. Jamal Tzorski, uh, is the petitioner. The owner is Pavel Tzorski. Request is special exception approval, proposed used car dealership, 23, 2523 West Lincoln Highway, C3 Community Commercial Zoning District. Is the petitioner present? Staff report, please.
Petitioner is requesting a special exception approval to allow a used car dealership to be located at 2523 West Lincoln Highway in a C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. Petitioner requested 57 cars. The petitioner has met with the Maryville Stormwater Director regarding the drainage and made the corrections on the plaque. Petitioner has submitted a lighting plan for the parking lot. Petitioner will erect a fence to screen the commercial property from the residential property. The garage will be demolished, and the parking lot will be paved according to the submitted site plan. The building will be used as the sales office. Customer parking will be in front of the property. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, closed on Sunday. There will be approximately two employees. Petitioner was deferred on September 25th and requested by the Board of Zoning Appeals to provide a site plan that showed the amount of cars that he was requesting. Petitioner has submitted a new site plan. Petitioner would like to have a total of 55 cars, including parking spaces that include the five for the employees and the customer. Petitioner is aware of the camera ordinance for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve. I've known this petitioner for over seven years, and he, everything that he has developed in the city of Crown Point has been very well-developed, and he has, um, performed to every standard that has been needed.
What are you sitting next to on that highway? What's next?
It's, uh, we're the old Burger, right next to the old Burger King, where it used to be on US 30.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
You don't have Burger King.
No, I don't have, not yet.
That's what I was wondering, Margie, if it was the Burger King.
Yeah, no, I don't have that.
Trying to buy it, okay.
Be nice.
And you will have approximately 50 cars?
Yeah, there's about 55 cars, and then seven of that's allocated for customer parking, employee parking, you know, handicap spot.
Oh, sure.
Uh, and then everything else is gonna be, uh, just all the way around. And then we're, uh, planning on putting a privacy fence, like a vinyl fence along the back, 'cause there's a house in the back.
Yes.
So, you know, it kind of divides it. We're gonna put some lights on the main corners, you know, to light up the parking lot. Well, of course, cameras and like, security system, yeah.
We have 50 cars ready to go?
No, we don't have 50 cars ready to go, but, you know, we're working on it.
I'm curious. You go to the auction and...
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna go to auctions and, you know, we have some cars, but, uh, they're gonna be nicer cars. We're trying to compete kinda with like the used lot of Bozak and Scapel.
Yeah, because they're right there.
Yeah, so it's kinda one of those. It's not gonna be buy here, pay here, you know, push and pull. So...
President, I'll second the motion, the Councilwoman Baron.
Credit, uh, credit.
No, 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 credit. Yeah, we're gonna work with finance companies.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Span, that we approve case number Z30E188-0919. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome.
Uh, thank you. Have a nice night.
That concludes BZA. That concludes BZA actions, old business, any old business. Any new business? At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment, we ask that you come, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Randy Palmiter, Northwest Indiana Building Trades, so on behalf of the working men and women, I pre, no, somebody says something, on behalf of the working men and women of the Northwest Indiana Building Trades, I appreciate the vote on the community center. I know it's been a contentious issue, we appreciate the relationship we share with everybody up here, obviously, it's my hometown, so I feel a little bit of a connection here, but I do appreciate it, hopefully the two councilmen elect, I know Leonard's here still and Rick Bellitt, you know, don't listen to the misinformation out there, when they do get up here, it's a good project, and I think it's a point worth noting that the contractors that are being awarded the project are gonna use Maryville residents, in fact, Dire Construction, 100% union and Maryville residents, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Announcements?
Real quick, Mr. President?
Yes.
I know we have a couple councilmen up here that like to flex their 5900 muscles every so often, so it's time for my two cents. The Maryville Pirates have a huge playoff game coming up, and I would appreciate if everybody from the town get behind these Pirates, support them, it's a hell of a team they got, and I can't wait to see them go all the way. We also have a second Maryville Pirate football team that is doing very well, they just won their state championship last week, and they're going to the Mid-America Championship next week, and I think one of the, one of the good reasons why they are is because they have a Minchuk on the team, so if the boys pull it off, I'll be reporting back here, see if we can do something special for both teams.
Jeff, I will, I will be quiet.
I don't want to hear from you right now at all.
I will tell you, I'm a member of Max Prep, and my nephew plays offensive tackle for the Pirates. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be working the chain gang at the Andrain Regional against Louis Cass up the street at 5900 Broadway, but I will be watching the Pirates on the phone.
All right.
All I can say is I'm glad football season's over. All I can say. But, you know, not to be taking it lightly, Jeff, and Sean, good luck to both teams Friday